I'd like to call the meeting in order. Would everybody please rise for salute to the flag?
The pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic, stands one nation,
Please be seated. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Township of Oldbridge Zoning Board of Adjustment, regular meeting, April 17th, 2025. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Oldbridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act at least 48 hours prior to commencement of the meeting by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the date, the time, the location, and the agenda of this meeting, by mailing such an announcement to the home news and Tribune, filing such, filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk, and posting the agenda on the municipal website. Ms. Pachelli, could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Mrs. Andrews?
She's present?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mrs. Chevalier?
Here.
Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Here.
Ms. Testaverde? Mr. Singh? Ms. Gomez?
Here.
Chairman Sullivan?
Here. Just a housekeeping issue. This meeting is being televised live on the local cable network here, CATV-15. It's simultaneously being put out on YouTube Live. If you ever need to refer back to look for a meeting, you can find them there under Oldbridge Township. Everyone here, I'm sure, has one of these, and I would ask you, please silence them or mute them so it doesn't interrupt the testimony and it's picked up by the microphones. I don't anticipate we'll be here for the duration tonight, but it's the rules of the board that should testimony go as far as 10 o'clock. We do stop testimony at that time. You have to open up a public portion of that particular application. Of course, as all applications, there'll be a public portion for each and every one. Having said that, I'm going to move right ahead. Minutes is first on the agenda, number three. This is minutes of March 2025 meeting board. Hopefully, everyone has had time to review them. Absent any comments, I'd ask someone to move them for adoption.
Chevalier will move it. Andrews, second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Board members, the same applies to the minutes of April 3rd, 2025. Let us move those for adoption.
Izzo?
Andrews, move it.
Izzo, second.
Is Mr. Izzo the second?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. I think we'll have you guys sit next to each other. You've raced to the finish line. All right. Item 4 is resolutions. We have two this evening, Mr. Dusty. 55-2023Z, David Merwin. This is for certificate of nonconformity. Sir?
Thank you. This is a resolution approving the three-family home, the uncontroverted testimony from the neighbors, as well as the applicant owners, that it's been a three-family home since the '30s, and our zoning ordinances didn't go into effect until 1970. So it's a pre-existing, nonconforming use. He had applied for a certificate of noncompliance with these end or a use variance. Since we granted the certificate of noncompliance, he didn't need the use variance. He's a pre-existing, nonconforming use, and that's what the resolution says. And also, there was a condition that he provide proof from the county Board of Appeals, Construction Board of Appeals, that it overruled the building department, and he had, you know, he had the right to have the building permits, and we have that. We did that. We have that condition.
Board members, you've heard the resolution. Someone want to move that for adoption?
No one's moving it.
I will.
Chevalier will move it.
And I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. 34-2024Z, CCP Outdoor LLC, doing businesses, outdoor media. It was preliminary and final site plan C and D variance. Mr. Dusty?
Thank you. This is, the billboards are not permitted in this area, but the billboard's already there. It's been approved for many years. They're changing the billboard. I'm going to get this wrong, from the static to the digital. Is that the way it goes? All right. And it's going to be, they're going to have the digital up every 30 seconds would be a change, which is much better and much longer than the eight-second minimum. It's the same spot, same footprint, same everything. So that's, everybody had to get the use variance application as well as the back to the C variance.
Thank you, Mr. Dusty. Board members, someone will move that for adoption, please?
I'll move it, Stoner.
That was Mr. Stoner and Ms. Andrews. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. All right, that does it on the resolutions. Mr. Dusty, I'm going to ask you to please swear in our professionals at this point.
Gentlemen, would you please all raise your right hands? Do you swear or affirm that you're the holders?
I do. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move forward in the applications. We're going to do them just as they are listed on the agenda if you happen to have a copy. First up is 21-2024Z. It's Renaissance at Oldbridge LLC. This is SD1, Special Development Zone, Block 13000, Lot 8.12. Physical location's 363 Highway 9. This is major preliminary and final site plan with a D variance. This is for, applicant proposes to lease a portion of the ground floor spacious general office. Salvatore Alfieri, Esquire, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, with the words of Alfieri, Cleary, Giacobi, Alfieri, Jacobs.
I got Cleary, Giacobi, Alfieri, and Jacobs on behalf of the applicant. Just one correction, the summary on the agenda said D variance relief, D variance is not required. We worked that out with Vena because there was an ordinance change since the last approval, but we do need a C variance for parking. This is an existing shopping center, end office complex. Mr. Bob McDade, who's seated to my left, your right, is a principal of the applicant, and we're going to have him orient the board as to what this application represents. Mr. McDade? Mr. Alfieri, we'll swear in anyone who's going to testify, and you can identify yourselves as you, as you sort of testify. Would you raise your hand, sir? I see, Mr. Can, okay. Do you guys, do you swear, do you guys, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Just give us your full name and spell your last when you get rid of the testimony. MC?
DAID.
Thank you. And Bob, what is your affiliation with Renaissance at Oldbridge LLC?
I'm the president of Renaissance Properties, and Renaissance at Oldbridge LLC is the owner of the property, which I'm a principal.
And how long, your company is a tenant in the office building portion, is that correct?
Right.
Mr. Alfieri, one thing. We have a new member of the board. Would you just orient, in case anybody doesn't know where the property is?
Right.
That it's already standing?
Yes.
Thanks. Just to take a moment, they'll understand.
Okay, so we handed out a three-page exhibit, Jerry, that you wanted to just mark it as A1. Is that what we're going to do?
A1.
So, Bob, why don't we start with the top, you all have this exhibit?
We do. Thanks.
So, start at the top of the three pager, and the bottom is Route 9, is that correct?
Right.
Why don't we start on the right side and work your way to the left? Just walk through with the board.
Okay. First, I'll orient where the property is. It's directly across the street from Oasis Ford, or was it All-American Ford? I'm not sure now. We're in the northbound lane. The building to your right, the longer building, is a retail building. Dunkin' Donuts is in there, Cafe Luna, Dentist, a few other tenants. North of that is a bank, and north of that is our office building. That is a two-story building from the front, three stories in the back.
And you're seeking to get permission to rent the ground floor of the office building, which is on the left side of that exhibit, correct?
Almost correct.
Oh, the bottom floor?
Well, part of the bottom floor.
Right. Okay, sorry. Yeah, we'll get there. So, other than the permission to rent, you're not proposing any site improvements of any kind?
No.
Traffic circulation, parking, everything exists?
Same way.
Okay, so if we flip to the second page, can you tell the board what these two photographs depict?
That's a picture of the rear elevation of the office building. And the bottom picture, if you look to the left behind that big, I'm not sure what type of shrub it is, those windows down low are a space that used to be occupied by our office staff, when we got this approved 25 years ago, approximately. That area was designated to be used for our office staff, which occupies most of the second floor. We no longer need that space. It's approximately 2,600 square feet, and we'd like to rent it out.
What was the square footage, do you say?
Approximately 2,600.
And I guess, leading to that, you corrected me. You were looking to rent only a portion of the ground floor. There are other tenants on the ground floor?
No, there are no other tenants. It's garages and storage.
Right. And those garages all exist as well?
Correct.
And in the application, there's a reference to some tandem parking for your employees? Can you just describe to the board how that would work?
So, there's five cars, six cars in the garage, two in the carport, and the employees of our office share the space in the morning. First in is where they're in, and we share.
And that's been operating that way for how long?
23 years.
Okay. And then the last exhibit is simply the current, this is the variance plan that was submitted, correct?
Correct.
And it's accurate, it's consistent with the aerial photo that we just referred to?
Correct.
Now, is, you understand that since you're technically adding office space, it's creating a variance condition for parking only. What is the parking situation on site during your term of ownership?
We've never had a problem with parking at the office space at all. Even the retail space, with the exception of Cafe Luna, on the weekends, maybe at night, they get a little busy. The Dunkin' Donuts does all their volume in the morning, mostly through the drive-thru, and we've never had a problem with having excess parking at the office.
There were two comments in Vena's report. One deals with potential site triangle, possible obstructions with growth. You'll agree to address that to the satisfaction of the board professionals?
Yes.
And to you also comments on the condition of some of the signage that may need to be replaced and/or upgraded. You would do the same?
Correct.
In terms of refuse, it's all existing conditions. You're not, you don't need to add any refuse areas?
No.
And then we did get a letter from the fire official that he had no issues with it. The site circulation always says, always operated fine as well, correct?
Correct.
I believe that's really all we had of this witness, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dargi, we're going to start with you?
I don't have any questions for this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burnham? Van Burnham. I told you I'd forget it.
Thanks. I don't have any questions right now.
Mr. Holland?
I have no questions.
Good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to call Scott Kennel, who is our traffic expert. Scott, you've been sworn in, but could you identify yourself and then place your credentials on the record, please?
Sure. Scott Kennel, K-E-N-N-E-L, with McDonough and Ray Associates, located at 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquan. I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates with over 35 years of traffic and transportation planning experience. I've testified in over 2,000 site plan applications, a number of them before this board, as well as the Oldbridge Planning Board, and I've been qualified in New Jersey Superior Court on multiple land use matters as a traffic expert.
Mr. Kennel's familiar to this board for years, and we accept his expertise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Scott, your office had prepared a report in support of the application. Would you summarize the findings of that report, please?
Yes. So, we submitted a parking report dated April 5, 2024, to the board, and basically, it summarizes the existing uses, the inventory, the existing parking, and we conducted parking observations at peak times. That would be coincidental with the occupancy of the 2,600 square feet as office space. The site currently provides 191 parking spaces. The maximum number of vehicles that we saw observed there were 100 vehicles at 2 o'clock. Many other times, there were less than 80 vehicles. I did a couple of observations again today, and they were consistent with our observations from a year ago. So, basically, we had concluded that when we look at the township ordinance, the township ordinance requires 217 parking spaces, but the ordinance is set up where it does not take into consideration shared parking, where we have a multitude of uses on site that don't have coincidental peaks. So when you take that into consideration with, for example, the restaurant having its peak later in the day, Dunkin' Donuts basically in the morning around lunchtime, and the office mid-part of the day, that our analysis concluded that there's more than adequate parking, not only for the existing uses, but for the occupancy of the 2,600 square feet in the office building. Furthermore, when you look, review the parking adjacent to the office building, there's approximately 85 parking spaces. We maxed out at approximately 35 to 40 vehicles during peak times for that office use. So again, there's more than ample parking spaces in the vicinity of the office use without having to compete with the other, I'll say, retail uses on the south side of the, of the site. And one last point, as far as parking rates, we consulted the Urban Land Institute, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and they suggest for this type of mixed-use development that you'd have use a parking rate of 4.5 per thousand, or a need for 165 parking spaces. And our parking observations conclude that that's consistent with those recommendations. So, in essence, it's my expert opinion that the occupancy of the office space, or 2,600 square feet, be more than accommodated and will not have any negative impact on the operations of the center.
One final question relating to DOT or outside agency approvals. Do you believe that either an NJDOT permit or letter of no interest would be required for this approval?
I do not. I mean, basically, DOT approved this development with the uses as shown. When a site is expanded or a change in use that increases the peak hour trip generation by more than 100 trips, then that would warrant going back to DOT for a new permit. The occupancy of the lower level with 2,600 square feet of office translates into five to eight additional peak hour trips. So therefore, we're well below the threshold that would require a letter of no interest.
And then, as Mr. McDade confirmed, there are no site improvements. The access drives are remaining exactly as they are, so there's no need to apply to DOT for any permits for changes to the access points. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, we have of this witness, Mr. Chair.
You know, what was the approval back in 13 when you changed, do you know?
What do you mean?
For the parking spots?
Oh.
Was it the same?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Dargi?
Mr. Kennel's testimony answered pretty much all the questions that we had in our review, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have any questions for Mr. Kennel. I do concur with his, his assessment that the shared parking arrangement, or the sharing of parking in the offsetting peak times actually supports the variance that's requested.
Okay. Does that include the extent of your report, all the issues?
That does. The, the-
You'll put that on the record, I'm sure.
We'll address all the technical comments, sure.
The technical comments that need to be addressed, I'm comfortable that the applicant will be able to address them. The letter of no interest, I don't believe is, should be a condition based off of the minor nature of the, of the application that we have.
Mr. Van Burnham? Anything?
I have no questions relating to traffic, no.
Back to you, Mr. Alfieri. Oh, you have any, or no? Mr. Holland?
No, sir.
I read his mind.
We have a planner here who, when we had a D variance question, we were going to bring the planner. I'm not sure, if you want to hear planning testimony, support the C variance. We have a planner here. She has a seven-page summary that she could read to you, but it deferred to the board. She's here if you want her.
I don't think anything's changing, except, I guess, the only thing that maybe the board would want to know is what type of uses would be in and there is.
We stipulated.
Would someone want to testify to that?
Well, I could tell you, in the application, we stipulate it would be general office, so would not be medical, so general office is always a much lower parking demand than medical.
Mr. Dargi, good, right?
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Dusty? Let me just see if there's any questions.
Yes, sure.
I'm going to start on my left, starting with Ms. Gomez. You have any questions, and I'll go right down the line. We're good.
That concludes our presentation, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennel. Yeah, once again, this is obviously, we're not changing anything. You're just going to rent out space that's actually already being used, or no longer, but you, the offices, the management people went upstairs, I guess, or to the other side, and now you have that freed-up space. Is that the way I got this?
Yeah, second for the, yes.
Mind if I go to the public at this time?
Please.
This is 21-2024Z. It's Renaissance at Oldbridge LLC. The physical location's 36, 3363, that's on Highway 9 North. This is for office space. It is not going to require a, D variance is going to be required with both variants. So, anyone here in the courtroom want to be heard, please raise your hand or stand. No one has. I'll close the public portion. You have final comments?
No, thank you.
Mr. Dusty, we're just going to have to vote on, as I read this, parking, right? And two design waivers?
Design waivers, preliminary and final site plan, and C variance. So it's a majority vote of the board.
Yes, yes. We can do the C first, and then we can do the design waivers, right?
Sure.
So that's for C for a minimum number of parking spaces. They have 191, 217 by the ordinance. And is there two?
There's three existing design waivers on-
No, I know the design waivers. That's the only C. It's just the parking.
That's the only C, yes.
Oh, that's the only, yes, I'm sorry.
That's the only C. Someone interested in moving that for approval?
Izzo?
Is there a second?
Chevalier?
Roll call, please. That's the C.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. And then the design waivers are three, correct? Minimum number of bicycle spaces, you're not putting one in, I'm assuming. Okay. Minimum parking area sidewalk width, we're not going to change that, right? And sidewalk along the frontage. We could take those together, correct?
Yes, you can, yes.
Unless anybody wants to pull one of those out, I'm going to ask for approval on the three design waivers.
Izzo, move?
Is there a second?
Chevalier will second.
Vice Chair seconds. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. And we have to, no, we did the C.
Did you do the site plan?
We need to do the site plan, final, preliminary and final, right?
Preliminary and final sites.
Preliminary and final site plan. No D variance.
That's right.
Chevalier will move it.
Vice Chair moves it. Is there a second? Mr. Stoner, seconds. Roll call.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
The businesses in there have been working out for years since they put that up, and I remember it before there was the building there. So, yes, and I'm sure they'll continue to operate in the same fashion.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Alfieri, and your professionals.
Mr. Chairman? I love hanging out with you guys, but I think this is the only thing I need to be here for.
Oh, why don't you stay around?
I mean, unless there's a party afterwards, I'm here.
No party.
If I drive real fast, I might be able to get home before my wife gets asleep.
Okay, well, please go home and have your dinner.
Thank you.
Happy Easter to you.
Happy Easter.
Mr. Van Burnham?
Um, he's my ride, so.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good weekend. Have a good Easter.
Thanks for your appearance. I hope it can be longer next time, all right? All right, we'll just give them a moment to step off the dais. I will call that 60, the next one on the agenda is 632024Z. That's 1103 Route 35 LLC. This matter, this public hearing for this application has been adjourned to May 1st. Be no further notice. Applicant seeks to appeal the zoning officer's denial dated 10/7/24 of a zoning permit to establish a gentleman's club. So this is the second time there's been an adjournment. So, May 1 will be the next appearance on that matter. It's 632024Z. That's gentleman's club appeal on Route 35. Having said that, we'll move forward. 012025Z, Matthew and Christine Bradley. This is our 20 low-medium-density residential zone, Block 11257, Lot 13. Physical location is 4284, Highway 516 in Oldbridge. This for Steve Varant for an addition. Applicant proposes to demolish the existing kitchen and sunroom and construct a one-story addition to the home. Your, Mr. Bradley?
Yes, sir.
So, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth to help you God?
Yes, sir.
Give us your full name, spell your last.
My full name is Matthew Bradley, last name B-R-A-D-L-E-Y.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bradley, you're not represented by anyone. You don't have any witnesses that you're going to bring forward tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there any exhibits that you're going to be passing for the board to see other than what you've submitted?
No, sir, only what I've submitted.
Then, then what I'm going to explain to you, you're looking for both variants of C variance. You're representing yourself. What the board needs to hear to justify that is what you're doing, why you're doing it, how you're doing it, all of those. Give us that. All of those, give us that. Uh, we may have some questions. You may have some questions for us. I'll go to the professional, Mr. Hallahan. He's gonna tell us why you're here for a variance, and then we'll come back. If you feel confident that you feel that the board's gonna vote in your favor, you can ask for a vote, and we'll take that vote. You'd need a plurality, so in this case, you'd, you'd need a majority of the votes. Uh, if you feel that you've left something out, or you don't feel that the board is gonna be in your favor, you can ask for a continuance. The board will probably grant that. We don't have to, but we, we probably would. I'll open up a public portion. If, I don't see anybody left in the courtroom. I know that's another applicant there, so, uh, there's probably not gonna be anybody to say, say that. Board, uh, council may have a question. I don't know, we'll see how it progresses. So you can do so at your own pace as a, as a resident here of the town, just like we all sitting here are residents of the town.
Understood, thank you. We intend to do the addition, my wife and I, because we have two young children aged four and two. Uh, if you'll see on the paperwork, our existing home is a hair over 1,000 square feet, and we have a third child on the way, and I don't think we could survive another winter with the kids in the house, uh, being as small as it is. We intend to do as much of the work ourselves as we can. I have 20 years' construction experience. I do quality control on infrastructure projects, and it's a project we're confident we can handle. If we had the option, it would probably be easier to move to a larger home, but with interest rates being elevated, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place.
That's understandable. We'd like you to stay here in Old Bridge. We don't want you moving somewhere else.
Uh, we don't want to move either. We already have the children's heights marked on the door jam, so.
Make sure you don't destroy that part of the door frame.
It's gonna stay there a long time.
Okay. That all you have for us right now? Tell us, what, what are you adding on now?
Uh, we're gonna demolish the existing kitchen, which is, I believe, 10 by 14, and the existing sunroom, we call it, which is a converted porch. We're using it as storage, it's not much. And we're building, let's see, what do we end up with net? We'll be adding about 800 square feet to the home. We'll be building an additional bedroom, so we're taking the home from a two-bedroom, one-and-a-half bath, to a three-bedroom, uh, two-and-a-half bath, with a little bit, with a living room, which we currently don't really have, for the children to run around and such.
Let me go to Mr. Hallahan, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, yeah, so the applicant is here tonight seeking one C variance. A C variance is actually for the combined side yard, um, where 40 feet is required, and the applicant is proposing 38.36 feet. Um, the addition itself conforms to the 20-foot side yard requirement, where it's proposed at 27 feet, but with the existing non-conforming, uh, west side yard, which is at 11.36 feet, um, his total comes out to 38.36 feet, where he's required 40. So it's one single C variance for the combined side yard setbacks.
So if not for about a foot and a half, he wouldn't be here?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Dasty?
We see on the survey, sir, your lot is, uh, 75 feet wide, whereas 100 feet required in that area. Tell us about the neighborhood. The neighborhood lots are about your size also, or?
I believe I have the narrowest lot of the bunch.
Okay.
Um, that was all subdivided, it looks like, in the 40s, when my house was built. They're all approximately the same depth. For the homes immediately around me, the lots go deeper as you move further west, down 516, but it, it's the smallest of the fairly typical narrow and deep lot that we have there.
Thank you. Would you, would you believe that the house, when it's completed, would blend into the neighborhood, okay, and, and stay with the neighborhood scheme?
Uh, much better than it currently does, because it's, it looks like the cheapest house on the block, and I'm surrounded by much nicer homes, so.
You're constrained, though, because of the narrowness of the property, that you, in order to make this work in the house.
Yes, sir, and, uh-
You'd agree with that, Mr. Hallahan?
Yeah, if the applicant's lot was conforming, like you said, he would not be here tonight, 'cause he'd meet all requirements.
Let me see if any of the board members on my left have a question. Go right down the row?
No.
None?
No.
None on my right? Okay, uh, you have anything else you want to tell us? I think you've kind of said it all. Once again, if, if this were not for a foot and a half or so-
Yeah.
Um, and the narrowness of the lot, you wouldn't be here tonight. You'd be building that addition. Let me see if there's anybody in the public. I know that there probably won't be. We'll see. Uh, this is, uh, 012025Z. The physical location's 4284, Highway 8, uh, Highway 516, Old Bridge. This is for an addition to a house, uh, that's gonna violate the combined side yard setback by about a foot and a half. Anyone here in the courtroom want to be heard on this matter? Please raise your hand or stand. No one has, I'm gonna close the public portion. Final comments, sir?
It would be really great if it was approved.
Yeah, when's the next baby coming?
December.
Okay, so you have the summer to, should we act in your favor, you'll have the summer to build. All right, we'll see what happens. Uh, anything else? Any final comments, board? Would you like me to take a vote?
Uh, yes, sir, please.
Okay. Board members, this would be for a C variance, this combined yard setback, uh, 40-foot required, 38.36 is, uh, going to, uh, exist. Someone want to move this C variance? Mrs. Andrews, uh, second? Ms. Gomez? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scagno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
You know, I said that before, we don't want anybody leaving the town. We want, we want to keep people here, and I'm glad to see that you're reinvesting in the property, staying here in the community. It's better for you, it's better for us. My vote is, of course, is yes. There'll be a resolution prepared by the next meeting, which is May 1st. You don't have to appear for that. You'll be in contact with the officials here in the town, and they'll tell you, get your permits and-
You'll be able to go get your permits after May 1st.
That's excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much for appearing.
Thank you, everybody.
Happy Easter to you.
Happy Easter, happy holidays.
Okay, uh, we have one more. That's 5-2025Z. It's Jabi Jafalakin. I hope I s-, I got close on that anyway, I think. This is, uh, this is, uh, our 5-zone residential. This is block 7125, lot 27, 62 Gazania Drive. This is, uh, for a six-foot fence and, uh, a pergola. The applicant proposes six-foot high fence and an 8-by-10 pergola. It's gonna require a C variance. Evening, sir. The board attorney, are you both gonna testify?
No, just, just me.
Okay, you know what I've found in the past?
Oh, I can-
You, you, she's gonna join in anyway, sir. We're gonna swear you both in.
Sure, sure.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
You heard my introduction to the gentleman that was here before you. You're not represented by, uh, any professionals, correct?
No, sir.
And you have no other, uh, exhibits that you want to show us?
No, sir, it's all, it's all-
Nothing other than what we have?
Just a few, few photographs, uh-
Okay. Well, we'll see if we, if you present them, we'll mark them into evidence. We'll, hold on, we'll, we'll get to that point. The same thing we'll apply. Tell us what you want to do, why you're here, to ask us for permission to do that. You may have questions, we'll have questions. We'll talk to the professional again. Right now, there's no one in the audience, but I do have to open up a public portion.
Sure.
Absent that, we'll come back to you if you want to call for a vote. I will do so.
Yes, sir.
You can proceed, sir.
So, good evening, good evening, chairperson, and good evening, the board members. So, uh, my name is Jabi Jafarul Khan.
Just push that mic a little closer to you. Thank you.
Is the green light on?
It is.
Yes, yes. Uh, my name is Jabi Jafarul Khan, and, um, I, I'm, I'm here in Old Bridge for the last two years, two and a half years. I live in 62 Gazania Drive, um, Old Bridge. It's a new community, Oakstead Glenwood of Schumacher Road. Um, we, we are a family of, uh, four. My wife here and two young kids, uh, four-year-old and, and nine-year-old. And we, we've always dreamed of, uh, a single, single-family home. We, we, we've been here in the US for, uh, almost seven years. We've been living in the rented apartments. Now, we, we wanted our own home with, with, uh, larger space, backyard, uh, to, to, for our kids to play around. So, um, given, given the location of our property, now, we don't have a much space on our backyard, so all we have is the side yard, and, um, we wanted to make the most, most of it, uh, especially for the safety of our two kids and, and also for privacy. Um, we would like to put a six-feet fence along the, uh, uh, side of the property, uh, the side yard, plus the pergola. Um, and, and my wife, she, she would like to do gardening and while watching the kids play in the side yard. Um, and, and again, um, we, we have notified all our neighbors, uh, within 20, 20 feet. Um, and we've also notified the utilities and the HOA. We have, uh, personally reached out to the HOA board and asked for, uh, their approval. They did respond to us. If the township board approves, they will, they will, uh, they have no, no, uh, issues or concerns.
I believe, uh, there was an email sent to, to, uh, to us. I don't have a copy of it, but, uh, oh, there it is. Well, it doesn't say much, uh, but I'm, I'm assuming this is, uh, do you know Ms. Magrane?
Kristen Magrane is the property manager.
Okay.
And, and she, uh, reached out to the board members, and, uh, she, um, pointed out the, the response that she got from the board members, saying if the township approves, they don't have any concerns.
I'm a little, uh, concerned about her worded, wording in this. I can read this into the record.
Oh, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, this is dated, uh, April 18, uh, April 16th at 2:07 PM.
No, hers is April 14th.
Oh, I'm sorry, she's down, yeah, she's below. April 14th, uh, 12:27. Uh, this is subject Oakstead Glenwood for a fence. It says, "Hi, Jabi, C message I received from board." If ta-, if township approves the variance, I don't think board has any concern. And that's Kristen Magrane, is that who you said?
Property manager.
Property manager. That leaves a lot to be desired, uh, and I don't mean to make a joke out of it, but if she's the property manager, she has to state affirmative. She's saying, "I don't think." I don't, I don't know what that means.
That, that comment-
See, what, what we usually ask for is a, a letter of no interest.
Yes, sir, yes.
So the letter of no interest would be, as this woman who's the property manager states that the association has no interest in this matter.
Sure.
"I don't think" leaves it a little bit vague to me. Mr. Dasty?
Uh, I think, if we wanted to be more certain, and I think we should, assuming for the sake of the discussion that, uh, we go forward and approve the application, we could make a contingent upon a more solid letter from the HOA, and I'll reach out for them and tell them we want something a little more, um, definite.
And that would be prior to the resolution being-
Oh, yeah, I'll send, yes, well, not tomorrow, but just early next week. You'll have it before the resolution is gonna be memorialized.
All right. Um, you're a, this is a, I guess you'd consider this a corner lot. It's, it's a curve. This is the-
It's a curve, sir, yes.
This is the new building, the homes off of 9 and Schindler Way, right?
Schumacher Road, the new shop-
Uh, Schumacher.
New shop, right, uh, behind the new shop, right, yes.
In the back?
Yes, yes.
All right. Are they fully built out yet?
Yes, they are all full-built out. The four faces, uh, they're all fully built out there, yeah. Except in the middle, they are currently constructing.
Well, uh, I was just concerned about, um, if there were neighbors already there. You have neighbors on both sides of the-
Yes, yes, they have neighbors on both sides.
I didn't visit the site, so I don't, I don't-
And, and the, and the, the, the street, ours is face two of the entire community, and that face two has two, two entrances to the street, so.
You have, you have photos there?
Yes, sir.
Why don't we pass, why don't we see them and then pass them, pass them around to the board? Sir, would you tell me what, would you describe what that is?
That's my backyard, sir.
It's your backyard?
Yes, sir.
All right. Make it A1. Yep. Okay, A1's your backyard, all right? Pass that to- Is this a picture just taken a little bit further away? Is this a picture just taken a little bit further away?
Yeah.
That's our side yard.
That's the side of your house?
Side yard, yeah.
Would you tell me... I see there's... It looks to me, is there a fence back here?
Yes, sir, that's my...
Is the other side of the house?
That's the side yard, sir. That's the side yard.
All right.
The fence is our neighbor's.
What fence is that?
My neighbor's friends. We have an agreement to share the expenses for that.
All right. And would you describe that?
That's the side yard of our properties.
This is your home?
Yes, that's our home, yes.
And that fence is your neighbor's fence?
Yes.
I'm assuming that's four-foot, five-foot? That's a five-foot fence?
Six.
Six-foot fence.
I'm sorry?
Six-foot fence.
That's a six?
Yeah.
Didn't look like that from before.
I believe, to my knowledge, it's a six-foot fence for the neighbors.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Let me ask Mr. Hollihan to explain some things to us first, okay? Mr. Hollihan?
Yes, so the applicant is here tonight seeking two C variances. One for a fence in a front yard where he's proposing a six-foot solid fence, where our ordinance only permits four-foot-high and open fences. Also, an accessory structure in the front yard where no accessory structures are permitted. Although it is on a corner, it's not definitionally a corner lot, because it doesn't intersect two streets. So everything along Gazania Drive, where the structures are shown on the survey, is in a required front yard. So that's why the applicant is here tonight, seeking those variances. With that being said, the... I also do want to note where the fence is proposed is within a four-foot-wide utility easement. I did have some conversations with the applicant prior to his hearing tonight, and it's... Correct me if I'm wrong, but you would relocate it outside of that easement. So about four feet back from the property line, so that you're outside that easement, unless you go to the easement holder and gain approval from the easement holder to construct it in that easement. I believe that was the gist of our conversation, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Other than that, yes, it's just two C variances, one for an accessory structure in the front yard, and then one for a six-foot-tall solid fence in the front yard.
The yellow line that's indicated on it, is that where the fence is proposed?
It's kind of yellow and green are interchangeable, yes. But that's where it's proposed. So the dotted line just to the right of it represent that four-foot-wide utility easement. If you look just kind of north of where the green line ends at the top, there is a call-out for a four-foot-wide utility easement, which points to that four-foot section between the property line into the applicant's property.
They're bringing it closer to their home?
They're essentially bringing it closer to their home by four feet, unless they get approval from the easement holder. So the township's position is that we don't permit any structures in any easements, specifically ones that are owned by the township. For ones that are owned by outside agencies, we permit easement encroachments as long as they have approval from the easement holder.
On the side that curves?
Yes.
How close to the lot line is that fence?
On the lot line. It's right now proposed on the lot line.
In the back, it was going to be proposed, but there's four-foot easement, right? Or that has to move in from the easement?
Are you talking about along Gazania?
Yeah.
It's right now...
Not...
The one adjacent to lot twenty-eight, the parcel to the west, technically, the top of the page. So it's proposed on the easement line. It's... I'm sorry, proposed on the property line. The reason why it cuts off where it does is that it's intended to connect into the neighbor's existing fence, I believe? Yes. So the neighbor to the north of the page has an existing six-foot vinyl fence that runs toward the, technically, side yard of the applicant's property, all the way to the back to the triangle portion. So his fence would stop where it does on the survey, and then the neighbor's fence would then continue the rest of that side yard property line to the corner of the back.
But whose would end on his property line?
Correct, yep.
The neighbor has one, right, you said?
Correct, yes.
And the variance is because it's a six-foot front fence in the front yard?
Yes.
Is the red shed, is that already there?
No. No, that is a proposed pergola. Proposed.
And that's permitted?
No, no. So he's here seeking a variance for an accessory building in the front yard as well. It meets the setback requirement of three feet off all property lines, but it doesn't meet the requirement, because it's in the front yard.
How many feet of setback if it's on a property line?
No, the pergola's not. The fence is. So the pergola is proposed four feet from the front yard property line, and then a minimum of three feet from the side yard. So it meets the setback requirement. The issue is that it's in the front yard.
I'm a little confused. Where's the eight-by-ten pergola? Is it the red thing, or is it the...
Maureen, do you have the laser pointer?
Is it... What's in red?
Jerry, what's the question?
Is the eight-by-ten pergola what's in red, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm not sure if it was the color.
Go ahead.
Now, it's still in the four-feet easement area.
So the easement area runs here, between this black dotted... Between this black solid line, which is a property line, and then this dotted line. The distance between these two lines is four feet, which is called out here. So this structure is on the easement line, but doesn't encroach into it. The fence, however, encroaches into the easement line. Of the conversations with the applicant, he'd be willing to relocate it on the easement line. As long as he doesn't encroach into it, my office doesn't have an objection to it being in an easement.
But we still have to get the letter saying that they can put it there.
If the applicant wants to put it on the property line, he would be within this four-foot-wide utility easement, which my office would then require him to get authorization from the easement holder to encroach into their easement, because this isn't a township-owned easement. It's owned by the utility company, most likely Verizon. So unless Verizon or whichever utility company owns this easement, gives him authorization, he would have to relocate outside the easement.
And we're looking at six-foot here?
Yes, sir.
The reason you wanted that for...
For the privacy and protection.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Dasty, if this were approved, the resolution would have a condition that this property management company would supply your office with a letter of no interest.
Yes, and also, what I'm hearing, we would also need... If the fence is going to stay where it is, I guess it's going to need the approval of Verizon to leave it there. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. I believe the applicant is...
Are you agreeing to move it in?
Yes, sir, four feet, yes, sir, yes.
I think the applicant would either pursue a letter from the easement holder. If they reject that, then he's willing to then move it in. Either way, it would still be in the front yard and would still require bulk variance relief. Got it.
Anything else, Dan?
My only general concern is this is a relatively strong curve here. So there could be potential visual implications with kind of one car coming this way, one car coming this way. I would be much more comfortable with the applicant relocating it at least the four feet back, just to kind of alleviate that concern that I have, because it's a relatively sharp curve there. That would really be my only concern.
On the arc you're talking about, right?
Correct, yeah. So essentially, relocating it at least four feet back from the property line, so it's not so up against where this sidewalk is, because a car coming here may not be able to see a car coming around the bend this way. At least pushing it back into the property line may alleviate that.
How much would that take, do you think, four foot?
It would be four feet. He would have to kick it in, yes.
Do you understand what...
Yes, sir, I do understand, yes.
Would you be willing to do that for the safety of your neighbors and anyone traversing on that street?
Yes, I...
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. So you won't... You're not going to seek to keep four foot back on the back, are you?
No, we... As you mentioned, for the safety of the other residents, we are willing to move four feet.
Okay. And on the back line, you're going to move that in away from the encumbrance there, right?
Yes, so the fence would essentially go from here to this dotted line, and then follow the dotted line across, and then reconnect into the corner of the house. The pergola would most likely have to move a couple inches at least away from the fence.
And you comply with the requirements for the pergola to be off the...
Correct. Do you guys know what the height of the pergola would be?
No.
Roughly, okay. Okay.
We have planned for it, but nothing is...
Okay. I have no further questions to come.
We could max the height.
My question was geared towards if it was six feet or less, it would be hidden under the fence. But being that they don't know, it's most likely going to be higher than that, but...
What, about ten or twelve?
Usually about ten, yep.
You'd have consideration, if you were going to do this, that you don't want to have your neighbor's view blocked by, you know, something too offensive and high.
Right.
That's what we were speaking about.
Yes.
Okay. So it would be the normal, and if they're normally ten or twelve?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me see if the board has any questions.
Sure.
I'm going to start on my left. Mr. Stoner?
Yeah, I have a question. You're going to use the same continuation of the fence that's there already? Like the same fence?
Yeah, same vinyl, because we... The HOA has restrictions in the type of fence. So we're going to use the same fence that the neighbor has.
Okay, all right.
And the fence on our backyard is shared by me and my neighbor.
Right, okay.
All right, thank you.
Does they have requirements on the...
Yes, HOA.
Okay.
White vinyl.
Okay, right.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Okay. Vice Chair. Yeah, I don't have a problem. Mrs. Andrews?
No, just on the condition that we receive a letter of no interest.
Right, right.
No, just on the condition that we receive a letter of no interest with regards to their board.
Okay. Mr. Dasty, that seems to wrap things up.
Well, there'll be two conditions, as I see them. One is the HOA letter.
Right.
And the second is to move the fence, I guess, in four feet, so that it's off... It's not infringing on the Verizon easement.
And the view, four foot off, back off the lot line, as it comes around on the curve.
Yes, sir.
Yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have to publicly open a portion. There's no one here, but I still have...
Yes, sure, sure.
This is matter five dash twenty-two-five Z. The location, sixty-two Gazania Drive, is for a six-foot fence and a pergola. Anyone here in the courtroom wish to be heard? Please raise your hand or come forward. There are no other people in the audience this evening, so I'm going to close the public portion, assuming no one has anything to say. Is there anything else you want to tell us?
No, thanks for the... Thanks, Chairman.
So if the board were to agree...
Yes.
To consent to granting the variance, you would agree to what the attorney just said?
Yes, sir.
You would move that fence properly, so the view wouldn't be obstructed. It would come off the back of the lot, because there's an easement that comes through there. I guess it's Verizon, as we talked about.
Yes.
And of course, the pergola wouldn't be offensively high. It'll be the normal build. And that has to be three foot off each side of the fence, right?
At the size that it's proposed, yes. So the setback requirement for accessory buildings is three feet, up to one-hundred-and-fifty square feet. So as long as the structure doesn't go exceed one-hundred-and-fifty square feet, then the setbacks wouldn't change. If it went above that, you would have to push it more into the property.
Sure.
Do you understand all that?
Yes, sir, yes, yes.
Would you like me to take a call for a vote?
Yes, sir, please, thanks.
All right, this is for... It would be for two C variances. It's a six-foot fence in the front yard, and this is an accessory structure, right?
Yes.
Yes.